Board meeting on Tuesday, December 15th will come to order. Gene, everything that's on the agenda is going to be heard. Is there anything deferred?
Nope.
Okay, good. So let's start with the A and R on Chestnut Street.
Brian Boyle is going to present the A and R plan. This is, um, the house is located at 303 Chestnut Street. The A and R plan is to take an existing three lots and reduce it to two lots. So the dash line here are existing lines that are to be removed and the solid line in between is to add. All three lots will meet zoning requirements.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Yep.
Or you can speak. You can have choices standing up or sitting down.
So this location is-
It's been a tough day, Elsiedem.
The location is right where Chestnut Street kind of breaks off to the left and Hillside Road continues onto Turnpike. It's right at that point.
Okay. Okay, good evening. My name is Brian Boyle. Um, looks like you just gave about 99% of the presentation.
Yeah.
You did a nice job. Um, I'm here tonight with the, actually, the owner, Phil Busby, is with me. What's in front of the board here, there are three existing lots of record on the corner of Chestnut and Hillside. Um, we have made the decision to eliminate two of the lines and take the three lots and turn them into two buildable lots. Um, and that's quite frankly, the long and short of it. We're going to be removing two of those lines and, and we, we moved an existing line over, I think approximately 15 feet to just give a little more buildable area to the existing house, which is not, which is shown as Lot One. That's an existing home. It is situated on the corner of Hillside and Chestnut. And the other, all three of those buildings are existing that you can see on that piece of land, on that, well, on that, I'm sorry, on the building plan.
Two of the lots have houses already, right?
Well, one is, one is a single-family home with a one-car garage and on the other lot is a detached two-car garage, unheated structure.
Oh, 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 that's what building is.
So what says building is a two-car garage, unheated structure.
Got it, okay.
That will be coming down also.
So what are you, building one house on the remaining bigger lot?
There'll be one house constructed on Lot Two and a new home constructed on Lot One.
Right, okay.
And that will all meet all the-
So you would tear down the existing house and build a new one on Lot One, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And they'll all meet the required setbacks.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Absolutely no notations that were, the lots disappearing. Um, how are the lots numbered now currently?
The lots, I believe, are currently numbered on your tax maps. I think it's seven, eight, and nine.
Okay, so you need to put in a notation that if Lot Seven is becoming Lot One-
Okay.
And adding, and then Lot Eight is being, you know, going away, you need to put some sort of notation so that way someone can follow this.
Okay, so what we'll do is, as you can see, thank you for doing that. What's, well, she pulled up on the screen there is, I'm sorry, I, it is, on the assessors' map is lots eight, nine, and 10. So you want that to be-
You can just put a notation in, like, if Lot Eight is primarily Lot One, you can put a notation, Lot Eight, it's probably better to make it Lot Eight dash one or something like that, or Lot Eight dash A is probably a little bit more.
Well, if you want, we can just simplify and just say lots eight, nine, and 10 will be eliminated. The new lots will be shown as lots one and two.
And then, but which, I mean, yeah, but you probably want to make, make it clear that one of the lots is disappearing, that the land, the land, the mounted area in Lot, say, is nine the middle lot for some, for some-
Yes, right now nine is the middle lot. That's really the lot that's being eliminated.
So Lot Nine, you should put a notation that Lot Nine, how many areas of square footage you're giving, whatever it is, 15 feet by 182, Lot One is being given, and other amount of square footage is being given to Lot Two, and Lot Eight no longer exists.
Yeah.
Something to that, or Lot Nine, whatever it is, something-
Yeah, I mean typically what you would see is Lot One equals old lot plus the sliver of the, you know, the, that you're giving it, and then Lot Two is the remainder of that, which is, it could be like, I don't know, eight minus one versus eight plus one or some, eight minus two. Just as long as we have a notation.
Do you, you got a pretty good feel for what?
Yeah, it's, yeah, just some clarity.
I was going to say, because I'm going to ask for some assistance in what she talks through-
Yeah, it's, it's just a question of clarity so that if somebody, you know, it's, it picks the thing up a year from now, they know what, what we're doing. And I, it's pretty obvious. I mean, I think it's pretty simple, so it should be, as long as you have a note that clarifies it, we're fine.
We can do that.
Okay, good. So would somebody like to make a motion to direct the planner to sign the Form A with that notification? Or not?
So moved.
Okay, motion made.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good, good.
Thank you.
Do you want to take the bylaw or take it out?
I'll take the bylaw.
Thank you.
Oh, we have another A and R. This is exciting.
So the second A and R is for Wayland Circle.
Okay. So what's the story on this one?
So this is a land swap. And is Stephanie here? Stephanie, you can come on up. For some reason, this is not loaded.
Hi, Stephanie Kiefer from Smolik and Vaughn. Basically, what the proposal is, it's not coming up on your screen, but it's a minor land swap, so the parcels, the properties at 27 and 33 Wayland, they, what the proposal is, is for a 30-square-foot area to be, that's shown on the plan, as parcel B, that would be conveyed to 33 Wayland Circle, and parcel A, equal-sized 30 square feet, would be conveyed to 27 Wayland Circle. What that does is it just, the owner of 27 Wayland Circle had had a survey done at some point last year and realized that there was a minor encroachment of an air conditioning unit and chimney. And so to resolve that encroachment, what the property owners are going to do is just convey out, so it changes the lot line. So as opposed to it being a straight line now, it's going to have a couple of jogs in it.
You're, you're in a PRD that has zero-
That, that's right, yeah. And it's referenced in the notes there on the side of the A and R plan as well, exactly.
Yeah, when you, when I saw Foxwood, now I got it because I said Wayland Circle.
Right, sorry, I should, I should have indicated it right away that-
So that's, that's why. So you're right on the edge of the lot line.
Exactly.
So, let's see. So you were, you're giving, uh, how does it work? You're, you're getting from which property?
So if, if you look from Wayland Circle back, the first little bump out, if you will, is parcel B, and that's going to go from 27, that's going to be conveyed from 27 Wayland to 33 Wayland. And what that will do is, it will address the presumed encroachment there of the chimney and the air conditioning unit.
Mm-hmm.
And then towards, farther away from Wayland Circle, farther away from the street, you'll see parcel A, and that's currently owned by 33 Wayland Circle, and they're going to convey that little 30-square-foot area to 27. So looking from Wayland Circle, what's going to happen is there's going to be first a little jog to the right-
I can't even read it.
And then a little indentation to the left, further back.
Hi, it's 30 square feet.
Yeah, right, yeah. This is B. Where's A?
A is this little 30 square.
Oh, oh, I see, yeah.
So they have the extra right noted notation.
Yeah, okay. So you like that?
Well, that's the property.
It's the linseal of approval here. So does anybody have any other questions? So if there's no further questions, would somebody like to make a motion to authorize the planner to sign the Form A?
I'll make a motion to authorize the planner to sign the Form A for 27 and 33 Wayland Circle.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All aye, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you don't want your air conditioner to be on your neighbor's lawn. That's probably not a good idea.
It's easy here.
It's so easy to have something drift over a line.
Couple of years. Oh, I know, but it's only, I mean, it's talking 30 feet, so it's only three foot wide, so they're over by like a foot and a half, you know?
Yeah.
It's the exhaust, it's the exhaust part here.
Yeah, so, okay, Gene, we got 254 Gray Pond Road. What's the story here?
So Jack Sullivan is here to present this plan. This is a watershed special permit request. The property is 254 Gray Pond. I cannot bring up the locust right now, but you might remember it as the former Nancy and Ted Leland home. So they were in recently in 2010 to construct a home on the adjoining parcel, so therefore an A and R was done, which makes it a new lot. It's subject to the conservation zone. However, the proposed addition is within the non-disturbed zone and not in the conservation zone. They have a proposal to add a deck that will connect to an existing deck. That deck is shown to cantilever over the conservation zone, but the footings themselves will not be in it. Lisa Egleston has submitted her review comments. The applicant has not responded to those yet.
So do we have some pictures?
John, I don't know. It's not, the files aren't coming up. So each of you guys have pictures? Can, Lynn, can I connect that to-
Go ahead, Lynn.
Can you mirror yours to the TV?
I don't know. Are you hardwired in? Are you, uh?
Nope, I'm just, I'm on earplay.
Oh, I don't, uh, earplay. Let me see if I can get in.
So Jack, you have a poster board, right?
I do have a poster board.
Okay. Which, which room are we in?
Meeting room.
Meeting room. We have to sign down on, one second.
Hold on.
Okay, there we go.
Oh, wow.
Can we just take over? We can just play movies now?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that'd be great.
So Lynn, you're driving now until this works. So the proposed addition, John, is when you're looking to your left of the house.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. And the proposed deck is to connect to the existing deck. And you see the note above the proposed deck is that reference to it's going to cantilever over the conservation zone, but the footings themselves will be outside of it.
Gee, what does cantilever-
It's just going to hang over it.
Oh, it's going to stick out?
Yes, yep.
See, learn something every day. It's French. The, uh, the best example of something that's cantilevered is the, the museum down in the waterfront, the, you know?
The Science Museum.
Not the Science Museum, no. The, what are the, Institute of Contemporary Art, I think it is. But it truly is a cantilevered building, so.
As far as the locust, that's the scale of the map of the parcel.
Okay, that's the scale of the parcel. Where on Gray Pond is that?
Right, now if you come off of Pleasant, you know the Leland's property is?
Yeah.
So they built the new house, Ted and Nancy, a couple of years ago. They came through. This is their former house.
Oh, so it's right close to where-
Right up.
-Pleasant Betts.
Yep. You come off of Pleasant Street onto Gray Pond, and it's the first one on the left.
It's where Pleasant, original site of Gray Pond.
Oh, where Pleasant, pardon.
Right, so you come around like that.
It's the place I was waiting for, that intersection.
Oh, okay.
So the house sits very close to the roadway.
Yeah.
Okay, here's the locust down here.
Oh, whoa, 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 yeah. Oh, now I remember. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, this is the new house, right?
This is the old house.
Oh, it's the old house?
It's the original house, and they built the house to the right of it.
Okay, yeah.
So they have recently sold this house, and a new owner is proposing this addition.
Okay, got it.
I walked through that muck, yes.
Hey, Jack?
Yeah, my name's Jack Sullivan. I'm owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group. And just to add on to what Gene stated, back in 2010, Christensen and Sergi did the original subdivision of this lot, and at the same time, they also had the wetland line flagged, and there was an Order of Resource Area Delineation that was recorded in 2010 for the wetland line. That wetland line's still in force due to the Permanent Extension Act, and it's shown on the plan. And the high-water mark of the lake was shown on that plan as well, and that was taken on, on the plan that I prepared. Basically, we're proposing a one-story addition. As Gene stated, even though the house is old, the, the lot was created in 2010, and as such, the 150-foot non-disturbance conservation zone applies to this property. The addition is entirely outside of the 150-foot buffer zone. It's a single-story addition. There will be a basement. There's very limited site grading. There'll be, there'll be a walkout on the basement side, on the left-hand side of the addition. You can see there's just transitional grading around the addition. And the idea with the deck connection to the existing deck, I want to note that the existing deck encroaches into the 150-foot conservation zone.
150 feet is 150 feet from what?
From the high-water mark.
Of?
Of the lake.
Okay.
Yeah. And the reason they're putting this addition on is they have a handicapped child. This is, this, this is actually the, the, it's going to be a handicapped, accessible addition to the home, and they'd like to have a deck for her to go out onto. And so the idea would be to just connect up to the existing deck for access. And like I said, all the footings would be outside of the 150-foot, but we cantilever over just as the existing deck does now. I did read Lisa Eglestein's comments. I'm fine with them all. They seem pretty minor in nature.
So can you speak to, will there be any clearing required?
There'll be no clearing. There's no vegetation over there now. If, oh, we lost it. But what I try to do is on the survey plan, see how, you can see, I show where all the existing trees are. There's, there's no trees to be cut. It's, it's a previously disturbed area. It's grass now, so there'll be no vegetation needed to be removed for the deck construction. We, we are proposing a drywall to capture roof runoff from the addition. And I provided all the calculations and the typical deed restrictions, as I typically do. No pesticide use, limitation on fertilizers. That will go as a deed restriction.
What's the, the rough slope there? It looks like it gradually goes downhill, but it doesn't look like it's that steep.
It's not steep in the area where the addition's going, but then it, it is a pretty consistent slope heading down to the lake from that point.
Can you, Lynn, can you just zone in? I just want to see the steepness of the-
The lines, okay, you can see the grading lines over here.
Yeah, no, I was just looking down to the lake.
It looks like-
Close the numbering.
It looks like it's going at about a 5% to 8% slope.
Okay. You're going to do hay bales and all that sort of stuff?
Yes, yep. I show the erosion control. That, that thick line, I can point to it-
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Right there is the erosion control. We're going to put a 12-inch diameter silt sock. Uh, we do not have to file with conservation. We're well outside their jurisdiction, so really, it's just with you guys for the watershed special permit.
Pete?
Um, could you go ahead because I'm still just checking a couple things.
Okay. Laura?
Lisa didn't have any problems.
They haven't responded yet, right?
Hmm?
Lisa's comments are still out there, right?
Yeah, but still out there, yeah.
I think the biggest problem we have is we allow cantilevering, and then to what extent? Because this is going to set a precedent. You know, I consider it is within 150 feet. Just because you hang it over, it's still within 150 feet. You always go by air rides.
Yeah, you're going to have water drip on it and it'll fall down a little bit.
Right. So I think we have to make a decision on that aspect of it, and then the rest of it, you know, what we do with that.
How, how much of it, sort of, on a cantilever basis?
Falls within 150 feet.
You're looking at probably around 50 to 60 square feet.
It's the corner.
Just the, just the corner. So right, this, this corner right here.
So Jack, when you point there, he can't see it.
Oh, he can't see on the screen. Oh, I thought, I thought he could see my marker.
But Lynn's got it right there, the corner of that deck.
So, John, just looking at the bylaw for this section, I think it's consistent with Lynn's comment. For the conservation zone, one of the prohibited uses is construction or placement of any new permanent structure and any surface or subsurface drainage, including stormwater runoff. So, I mean, it is cantilevered, but, you know, any structure and any runoff is specifically listed and prohibited. So is there a reason that when you're, you know, I know there's an existing sort of unfinished deck there.
Yeah.
When you're designing the new deck, is there, is there a reason that it can't just follow the 150-foot line?
You can see from that angle, it would be difficult for them to get access onto the existing deck. If you think wheelchair, like a wheelchair.
Well, I mean, is, is it possible to design two decks that are not connected?
Yeah, that, that would be possible, but the, their intention was to connect. And I think John's comments, taken, there's, there's no roof on this. It'll be open. We'll put crushed stone under it. It's already a previously disturbed area. We're not taking any vegetation out. And a little bit, if, if, I wanted to say, the house is old, the lot division's new. So unfortunately, we fall under the new requirements. If this, if this had not been subdivided and it was pre-1994, which the house is pre-1994, we wouldn't even, it would be a 75-foot buffer, not the 150.
I think it'd be 250.
No, it's less.
So, well-
I had a dent where I had to install something like gutters underneath it to take the, the water off that was falling on it and would have run off into an area that we didn't want it to. And I had to run it into a drywall on the other, on the other side. And you could do that on this, couldn't you?
I could do that, yeah. Yeah. Or I can just put crushed stone underneath, you know, enough that it would go through and recharge.
Well, but you'd be-
And really where the exist-
You'd be conforming to the concerns about the 150-foot thing. There wouldn't be any runoff to it.
Well, it's not actually, it's, the runoff has to be mitigated regardless. It's in the non-discharge zone too. So, so the runoff has to be 100% mitigated. So that's regardless if it's cantilevered or not. So there's a difference.
The, I think, Lynn, you said it right. Is the issue is the precedent thing. I mean, I don't like the fact that it's a sort of a de minimis problem, but it is in, it is inside 150. And, you know, I, I don't think just because something's cantilevered means that you waive it off, so. Because for zoning setbacks, you would include it, and for anything else, you would include it. So, just trying to think.
You could do what Peter said, angle it. It would connect, make the deck a little wider. Um, I, because I assume you're leveling it from both decks to connect, so that would give you, I, I think that would give you a 48-inch still wide path.
It would be tight. And, and I think the, if, if this was just a new, where the existing deck already encroaches within the 150?
Our bylaws don't give us that option.
Right.
You know, we don't say we, you know, just because you're already encroached, it says in any new structure. It's very clear. You know, I think we're going down a slippery slope because then we're going to be at someone else who wants to cantilever over 10 feet and then 15 feet.
So let me just back up.
Yeah.
Other than the cantilever, it seems to work. So the majority of the project is, seems workable? Is, is that correct?
There's a portion that sticks out.
So-
So they just can't connect the decks?
Well, I think we're, we're wondering if, if in fact, if you could still have the 48 inches if you shaved off that corner and perhaps get the best of all world. But I mean, that's up, I don't know what the dimensions are.
I could talk with the owner and the architect on that.
Is it eight inches, is it eight feet wide?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, if, you know, you could, and it would be tight, but you could also, and I don't know what the interior of your house is, but you could just provide a deck that goes out to the end of, of the house where you wouldn't be encroaching, and then just go through a double door.
The whole idea of moving to this house, I'm sorry, but it's to make-
Could you come up to the-
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry to hide, Jack.
That's okay. No, take over.
We built a house 10 years ago that was our dream home, and we had a child that was severely disabled. So we've recently moved out of that home and moved into a house with the hopes of being able to adapt it for her. She's 11 years old. She's always in a wheelchair, except for when she's walking with an adult. It's really necessary that we have wide hallways and wide doorways so that she can walk through these doors with us. So although sometimes she's in a wheelchair, a lot of times she's holding my hand and walking along my side. We don't want to take on a huge expensive project and not get what we need and have it be more difficult for her to navigate. I know that there are bylaws, but she's also severely disabled. And I would think that this would something, be something that you would consider when you deliberate, because I know that there's exceptions made for handicapped people, and that ADA has actual guidelines that they propose for situations like this. So I just ask that you consider that.
Actually, unfortunately zoning, we have to zoning for our variance, right?
Well, let's see. I mean, we do have a, a little bit of dilemma here, and I understand. I mean, you know, if you were looking at it, of course, you would want to connect the two things, especially given the circumstance of a disabled child. The question is, can we figure out a way to do this without having a zoning violation? It's pretty hard to figure out a way through that. But let's keep on thinking if there's a way we can deal with it. I don't know.
The, the floor levels are going to be the same, correct, Jack?
Yes.
So there's no, is there any, there's no access, there's not going to be access to the house, to the existing deck?
Um, well, there's access now through the existing house to the existing deck. So there, there is existing access to the existing deck.
Is it possible to have access to that new deck that could connect to the access to the existing deck? You might have to go through the house, but-
Yeah, she didn't have to go through the house to get there. I think the idea was so if she went out onto the new deck, it would just connect through and she could go in and out either entrance. But I have dealt with ADA work before when I've had to put in like switchback ramps on front of buildings and stuff, and I haven't had to go, some, some building inspectors have said I had to go to ZBA. I know this might be a little bit of a different case where it's a conservation zone.
Well, it is. I mean, we're not, you know, sort of crazed about this stuff, but it is our own lake and we take our responsibility pretty seriously. And it's, you know, we're, we try to fairly apply the rules, but we do have rules. So the, the question is, you know, I think everybody's empathetic to what you're trying to do here, and I think the project is a good project, and I don't think it's too complicated. We just have this one problem that we haven't figured out a way to solve yet, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, the watershed bylaw actually says it has to go to zoning for anything that's, so that's the only, it's the way it was written. Sort of weird, but that's the way it was done, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, the whole idea was that we didn't want anything built within 150 feet of the lake, so, you know, and, but we would make exceptions in some cases. Uh, you know, obviously, the, you know, we can construct mitigation that's going to mitigate any impact of this. The question is, it's a, it is a violation, so. Um, we, I, I mean, I go back and I look at exactly the way the bylaw is written to see if there is, you know, whether there's any flexibility to waive this, but I'm not sure there is, so, you know.
It says that, you know, no special permits will be granted-
Yeah.
-in the conservation zone. Just-
Yeah, no, that's what I mean. It's pretty, it's pretty clear what it says, yeah.
And, you know, the other zones allow, in the bylaw, flexibility.
Yeah.
This one doesn't.
Yeah.
I'd like to propose a resolution that we send it to the ZBA with the recommendation that it be approved.
Well, yeah, except that, that takes time and, you know, I mean, just, yeah, it's a separate application process.
I understand.
I mean, that's, when it comes still, we can do that. But you know, if, well-
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Um, I've, I've done things in the past where the, the board could ask for a clarification from the building inspector in writing. And if he writes and says, yep, if you need a variance for this, I want to need a variance.
Well, but I mean, the, the language is pretty clear.
I know, I know.
You don't have to be, I mean, you know?
No, I, I know, I know.
I mean, building inspector can say black is white, but it's pretty clear what the zoning- I mean, building inspector can say black is white, but it's pretty clear what the zoning says. So.
I'm just thinking if she wants to keep the deck as is, and if the only other option would be to cantilever it or do two separate decks. Not cantilever it, to, to cut the deck at an angle so that...
I understand fully why you would not want to do that. I mean, obviously, it's, it's more logical to do it, we just have this problem. I mean, that, you know, none of us are happy about it, but it is what it is, yeah.
Now, the existing deck has footings, correct?
Yes.
And the new deck's going to be cantilevered, so you're going to cantilever it, you're going to take up the floors in the house in that section, correct, to cantilever it?
No.
How are you going to cantilever it?
The, the footings would be outside the 100-foot, 150-foot buffer zone. The deck would cantilever off of those footings, nothing to do with the house.
Okay.
Yeah, you would just put them right short of the 150-foot line.
Right, right. I mean, the rest, the rest of Lisa's comments were very minor, they were actually more just points. And the, the main one was the discussion on the deck, which we're having tonight. The rest were just points saying the deed restrictions look good, there wasn't anything outstanding, so.
So the bylaw says that it's, cannot be built within the conservation zone?
Prohibited includes construction or placement of any new permanent structures. That's the word.
I don't know, it's in the area, it's in the aerial portion, it's not...
Yeah, why would it be, if it's cantilevered over it, why does that mean that it's in it?
I mean, it seems like it would be, the building itself is sitting in it.
Your neighbor's deck can't be built over your lot line.
That's a good point, valid point.
I mean, what you, what you do is any setback is predicated on the, whatever part of the structure extends further style.
Yeah.
So, well, we, I think we can, we still have to get the answers to the questions. You're going to do the answers to the question, and we should do some thinking if there's some way to get our way through this. I mean, again, I don't, I don't sort of relish this one, because, I mean, and I don't think anybody does. We're just trying to deal with where our authority is here, so if...
Just as another suggestion, could you build it, everything except the connection to the deck, while you're going through the ZBA process?
I would think so. That's a good suggestion, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you might not want to do, that's actually, you might not want to do the whole deck. Certainly, I mean, if, if we think we have to go through the ZBA process, we would work with you to avoid you having to pay duplicate sets of fees for basically the same review. But we, you know, we, we do try to keep our, our core principles, so that may be one of the ways sort of through this, is that we, we could approve everything else and, you know, just say for the deck, go to the ZBA, and that way it doesn't completely slow you down. I appreciate the fact that there might be some uncertainty about that, but, you know, we're in an expedited process, they should be able to work that through pretty quickly, right?
So I have a question. On there it says that you're replacing the existing deck too, so you have that other corner that's going to be an issue also, right?
Yeah, actually.
I mean, it's not just the new deck, it's the old deck.
But I would think there'd be some grandfather...
I don't know if it's grandfather, there's no grandfather clause.
I mean, I, I think the bylaw is written for this zone to not allow exceptions. And that was the intent, I think. So, you know, I agree with John, it's worth thinking about if there's, there a way through this, but this is, this is the challenge, it's not written to allow that.
Right, well, I think if something legally was existing at the time of, that this was adopted, it would be allowed to be, be built back in kind, but that's my opinion.
Is it being built in kind or is it being placed in kind to our deck?
The footings are going to stay, it's just, let's say, you know how everyone does track decking now, or something low, you know, they'd replace it with a same, you know, size and...
Well, yeah, I mean, you gotta go, again, for something pretty small, I mean, let's not make too big a deal of it, but I think, I think when you look at existing non-conforming uses and they get replaced, there's arguably, you, you gotta read that pretty carefully, because there's some twists and turns in it. So I, I do think maybe thinking about, you know, as I said, one of the options here, you know, I don't think the board is, you know, close to making a decision, would be to approve the rest of the project and, you know, tend to, keep that piece open in that we will approve it subject to the ZBA thing maybe, and if you should mitigating sort of things. I mean, again, it's, we're not desirous of being highly bureaucratic or anything, but it is our lake. I mean, we only have one lake, so.
You're right, right. Well, I would just, I'd request to continue then, I need to answer some questions. I can talk with Nicole, I can talk with the architect, see how we want to proceed, if we want to try to angle the deck and avoid ZBA, or if we want to go ZBA. ZBA would be, you know, basically a two-month process, but I appreciate the board saying they could approve at least the main addition and hold the deck out until we see what happens as well.
If you could levitate the house and move it five feet closer to the street, you'd solve it perfectly.
Be perfect, be perfect.
Yeah. And this is, you know, sort of changing the whole thing, but could you put the addition on the back end of the garage so that you could access the existing deck? I don't know.
Yeah, she'd be total, she'd be totally separate from the rest of this town, you know? We'll give it some thought.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your, your side of work with this.
Yeah, I appreciate your feedback, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, thanks, Jean.
Lynn, do you feel locusts, the various... Yeah. So the next item is also a new public hearing for 1812 Turnpike Street. 1812 Turnpike is the lot that had the former Equestrian shop. So it is right at the intersection of Berry Street and Turnpike Street on a long triangular parcel of land. The locust. But you're getting, do you, do you have connection?
Yeah, I just turned it off, so I was fishing through all my emails and stuff.
Okay. Okay, so, that is the locust one?
Let me just move this stuff into a Dropbox, make it easier, because I can't expand it from here.
Jean, can you just take a picture of this and post it?
I don't, for some reason, it does not interconnect connection for me, so that's why Lynn has connected it.
I'll turn there.
Is this the proposal?
That's the locust.
That's the locust.
Well, this is the existing.
Right.
This is the existing, this is right.
Okay.
This is north, can we help on the page?
Yeah.
That's in that building, just so I can...
This is a couple of businesses and, this is not ours, this is us right here. This right here was the old Equestrian.
Oh, okay, yeah.
To the right of it is the old Ryden Academy.
It's the old Ryden Academy, they put all the apartments in there right now.
Good.
And the construction. So again, that's why, north is up on this page.
Are you going to be up to some, I'm doing...
Yeah, we're, yeah.
I'm doing all the files.
Okay, yeah, we're waiting for you.
Oh, it's right there. I'm trying to move all my files over, so.
Oh, well, can you put something on?
Well, I don't want, I really don't want my email and stuff up on the screen, if you don't know, okay? If you want to do yours, I'm not...
No, that's quite okay. I can't get to my, I, my email's a disaster, so.
Okay, so, so the... So the over, we can just give the overview, yeah. So the, the proposal, this is Steve Haidt, he's the engineer for the project. There's an applicant that would like to purchase this property contingent upon permitting. He'd like to raise the existing structure, rebuild on the existing foundation. It's a non-conforming pre-existing lot, so the setback to Berry Street currently is just over 12 feet. They are proposing to stay within the building footprint and not make it any more non-conforming. They've talked to the building inspector, who has approved the intent of that.
Could you closely parse the language of non-conforming use and what they're allowed to do and not do?
The use is allowed, it's general business allowed.
The use is allowed, but in terms of dimensional is...
That I defer to the building inspector.
Okay, let's, is the, what's the size of the lot here?
Do you have the parcel information?
Yeah, I'll go on it. It's 40,000 square feet, 40,521 square feet. This is existing facility, I'm sorry. My name is Steve Haidt, representing the applicant, George, with the owner of the property, Monique. She's here as well. And as Jean had pointed out, George is looking to get a new facility constructed here, and once he goes through the permitting, he'll purchase the property. So that's, that's the process we're in right now. So right now, this pro, this is the existing parcel right here, and I have other plans here that show it a little bit better. But just general from terms of locusts.
Yes.
Terms of locusts, this is main, this is Turnpike Street, this is Berry Street, this is the corner, this is north, center of town coming in. This is the existing building right now, the lot is roughly 40,000 square feet. The building's a little over 4,200 square feet. It is two access points, one off of Turnpike Street and one off of Berry Street. So that exists as it is today. It does have town water and has a septic system on site right now.
Are those two access points connected to where someone can get on to Berry, can go off of Berry Street and get on to 114?
Absolutely correct, yes. This is, connects all the way through. And this driveway on Berry Street is actually shared with the abutting parcels as well. Way back when, and Monique could tell you better in terms of exactly when, but they had granted themselves an easement for, for access, shared access on that side. So that, that access on Berry Street is for both lots, and the one on Turnpike Street is just for our lot. So that, that's, that's the existing condition for as it is right now. So, in terms of setbacks, and we, we had met with all the town staff, we had a TRC meeting in October. We'd come in, we'd talked about the different uses and what we're proposing to do on the property. And what George is, George has an existing facility in town right now, car repair facility, down next to Stop and Shop. And basically, we want, he wants to relocate to this location. It is the general business district, we did talk with the building inspector, as well as all the town staff. Everything we're proposing to do here is, is allowed in, in the zone. So right now, the existing building that you see right now, the lot itself predates zoning. So predates zoning predates the setbacks. There is a setback provision in the zoning that says no building can be within 150 feet of the property line on Turnpike Street, which essentially eliminates the lot. So that was part of the conversation we had had at TRC with, with everyone. Jerry was there, Jean was there, health, fire department was there as well. So the existing structure right now has a setback off of Berry Street of 12.7 feet. And this is a brand-new survey, we did a new boundary, relocated everything, so we know exactly what's happening here. What I've shown you is by zoning, you have a 25-foot building setback here. 150-foot setback is actually beyond the lot here, but existing the building actually is, like I said, 12.7 feet on this side, 31 feet on this side, and it, and it's 29 feet plus and 31 feet on that side off of Turnpike Street. So the proposal is to utilize the existing footprint. And talking it over with Jerry, we are going to utilize the footprint there. We're going to use the foundation, everything that we can possibly use in this and still provide a structurally sound building. We're going to utilize that and not encroach anymore, so we're not going to increase the non-conformity as to what it exists today. So our building will be, pardon me?
Because you really can't.
We're not going to get variance, right? We're not, we have no intention, we don't want to go get a variance. So what we've done is we've made the building fit within the footprint of what's here now. With the exception of, of a little bit of a... Is it up?
Yeah.
You may not have these plans, you have that one, okay. So what we had talked with George, to Jerry about as well, just to square it off, to be able to get the, what he plans on doing is he's going to have interior car, what's the other word? No, no. Lifts. Thank you. So everything is going to be interior. You're going to come in the end of the building, you're going to come in, there's going to be six lifts inside, and you come out the far end, so nothing is, none to repair, nothing else is going to be outside. So to do that, we talked with Jerry, was utilize the same footprint and then just, just basically supplements that we had safe structural component for the building. And Jerry has looked at this and he's essentially given us, he said, I actually talked to him this afternoon, he said that that's consistent with what he had told us in, in October, and it meets zoning.
So you're saying you're adding to the side, I'm just trying to...
Yes, we are going to, that's exactly right. We have to, we're going to add a little bit to the building, so we actually can square it off and, and get that building structurally sound. So, but in all cases, we are not going to increase... What's that?
How is that not increasing the non-conformity?
Because the not, right, right now, the closest the building is right now to Berry Street is 12.7 feet. We're not going to get any closer than 12.7 feet. So the building still meets all the setbacks relative to, if you were to look at the existing non-conformity, which is 12.7 feet, we're no closer than anywhere. In this case, the only point that's going to be that close is, is what we're proposing on that corner. Which is here.
And is that corner already there?
That corner already exists, that's correct.
Which corner already exists?
This corner right here already exists. So, and I don't, I don't know if the right word is by default. By default, you have an existing 12.7-foot setback on Berry Street from the existing building non-conformity. We are not increasing the non-conformity by going any closer to Berry Street.
So what would the current setback be for this new building?
25 feet.
Okay, so the corner, that where you're expanding the building, move your hand right there, how far is that from the road?
That's 23.4.
So the piece of the building that you are changing would be less than the current non-conforming, but would encroach into the current conforming?
That's correct.
So is there a way to square off the building provided it's structurally, structurally sound and conform with conforming for the portion that is being built?
Yes. Should we answer, yes? What we'll do is we'll, we'll shrink up the building that side, so we'll meet the 25-foot setback for anything we propose to, to put in. That's a, it's a very good point. That's simply done, yes, no problem.
You're right, you're actually, you were right, you, you can increase the size of the building without making it more non-conforming, I hadn't really thought about that, that's true.
Right. And we, we haven't worked out the structural details yet for that, because again, we want to make sure we've, we've gone through this process before we do that. So, are we good with that, does that make sense?
So we understand what you're doing, got it so far?
I, I don't understand the drive-through, what I heard was a drive-through repair shop.
They have to make the repairs very quick.
Very quick. Is there a speed limit on this, or can they go as fast?
Well, as you know, if you can get in and out the same day, that'd be a great thing. So the idea here is, is, the, the building's going to have two purposes. One is going to be the car repair facility, and also at the corner on the side over here, what he's going to do is put a pizza sub shop on there as well. The, this whole area right now is existing paved, the footprint is essentially exactly the same as what's out, out there right now. The idea is to come in the building, do all your repairs inside with the lifts, and then come outside and, and put them here, wait for people to come pick them up. The office would be in the corner here. You would have no drive access into the building from either side, from either Berry Street or from Turnpike Street, but it would be through the, through the end, so. So part of the proposal would be to keep the existing split rail fence that is there now. Continue a white, like PVC-type, architectural-type fence down and across the back of the property. So when you're looking at it from coming south on Turnpike Street, you're going to be looking at the fence and also the vegetation. We're going to leave all the trees that exist there now, enhance the landscaping in the upper part over here. And the reason to put the fence over here is that we, for snow storage, to have it in through here, keep it off the edge of pavement and, and basically have it behind the fenced, everything would be within the fenced area.
And could you just explain again, the new fence is white PVC?
Yeah, so you know this.
Solid or rail?
We were thinking solid, a six-foot-high PVC architectural fence. Where? Along, down here, and across the back over here. Six feet, six feet, excuse me.
It's kind of high, isn't it?
Well, six feet is a normal, normal fence.
For residential, not for.
Yeah, for residential, not for commercial.
Commercial.
We can make whatever height you guys would like. It was just, we, we were thinking six foot just because if we're going to have cars parked in through here, wait for people to come pick them up. We have some type of buffering for that, so people.
Well, yeah, we can talk about that, there may be other ways to buffer. Am I right that where that area that you talked about is where people would pick their cars up? That currently is under starb right here?
This, this is currently grass, that is correct.
Yes, okay.
Absolutely correct. So the idea here is utilize the existing pavement out back, give us some area to be able to park the cars after they're repaired. Dumpster would be out back as well. That dumpster would serve both the, the proposed facility for the car repair as well as for the restaurant. We've talked with water and sewer, and there is water and sewer available out here on Berry Street as well as down. The project across the street is putting a new manhole across the entrance of Berry. We're going to tie into that. We're going to bring water and sewer off of Berry on this side.
Is that going to be a chip shot to do that, or do you have to do very much?
For the water?
Yeah, to extend sewer, we're the sewer than water, is it? How far do you have to go?
Well, the sewer, we're going to have to come all the way down to the end of the property and across, across Berry Street. Berry Street, we're going to probably come about thirty-five, forty feet across Berry Street to a manhole. It's being constructed, actually installed probably within the next week or two.
Are you dependent on what is going on further down to connect to the sewer? I mean, are you connecting to the line that they're building out to the street, or? The, the new development?
Yeah, so the new development is actually redoing the entire intersection of Berry Street. They're putting an entire sewer system in, and they're putting sewer, a sewer manhole in Berry Street that they're going to tie into. That now, that will tie into, actually, they've already put the stub into the sewer manhole that's at the intersection right here.
Right, so you just connect into that?
We're just going to, yeah, we're, instead of connecting it to the existing manhole, we're going to connect it to the manhole that they're installing this week.
Yeah.
Just because it makes, it's easier to put in there, it makes a lot of sense. They'll do it at once, and then when they repave the intersection, it's all done.
Right.
So in terms of a chip shot, yes, we, we can come all the way down across here, it'll be thirty, forty feet, get across Berry Street. Water, same thing, it's on, on the other side, it'll be twenty, thirty feet off our property, very, very quick, we can get in and out. Access would remain the same. We've talked to conservation already, we've gone over that with them. We've talked with National Heritage as well. They've already sent us a letter saying that there's no jurisdictional issues here. Concom the same thing, since we're not, we're not impacting anything within their a hundred-foot setback for those, for, for that, for the work that we're proposing. And sewer's good, water's good. And zoning. So in general, that's it. That, that's what we're proposing to do. So what, what George is looking to do is relocate his existing business to here.
Lynn, can you put up the elevation?
Yeah, that's a sixty-four thousand dollar question, we'll just send it over.
So.
I don't think you want to see it.
Yeah, I'm sort of afraid of.
Yeah, so.
This elevation, based on.
Metal facade.
Metal facade, not good, not good.
We, we can make it out of anything you want. And so George is quite amenable to feedback from you guys in terms of colors and materials.
Yeah, I mean, it's. We're, it's not obviously, it's not like it's a historical district where you look at, parse every fine individual thing. But one of the things, if you look at virtually everything that's been built over the last fifteen or twenty years, along 114 has a certain New England character to it. And it, it tends to be generally consistent in terms of the, the style and the architecture. And especially since what you have there today is fairly a, you know, I think a quintessentially scaled New England building. To have something that's just completely different from that, it's such a nice intersection, frankly. It's, we, yeah, we'd love to work with you to, to get something that, that would, we think would be a little bit more appropriate. You know, in terms of design features, so.
Yeah.
Just don't put a Kubla on top of it.
A Kubla?
I think you, I think we're required to have them.
I have a question on non-conforming that probably Laura can answer. The property owned both parcels for over fifty years. Emerged. So I don't believe that this may still be the case. And then they sold off the parcel in two thousand and seven. So I'm not sure if you're correct on this non-conforming issue that you.
The lot, the lot, these are two separate lots, always have it, two separate lots?
But they were owned by the same person.
Same, owned by the same person, but they can't, you can't merge them without, well, a voluntary merger, correct?
No, I disagree.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm asking.
I, I think by law.
They automatically merge.
They automatically merge.
After a period of time.
If it's common ownership.
It was common ownership.
Yeah, right, I mean, you could. What people do is they just put them in different trusts.
Right, but they were common ownership.
Yeah.
But the lot, the lots are not, the lot is not non-conforming?
No, but the, but now, but when they got sold off, you know, you're, now you're trying to get the property that's, you're saying it was grandfathered, but it may not be grandfathered.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I mean, if you think about it, if, when the lot got, you know, if they were separate lots. And I try, I remember the building next door, it went, so I remember when, when we did that. But if that was always the dimensions of those lots, and that building was always there, I think, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah, we, we've gone back and found the, the age of, of the lots and the age of the building as well. They, they all predated zoning, and so that lot has never been, that, that lot has been a lot of record since. It's Lot A and Lot B. So what would you just say?
But I mean, how, again, I appreciate your willingness to work with us and what it looks like.
Yeah, no problem.
How will we go about doing that? Because I guess the, the one thing that I would say is, you know, the use is, it's a use that's a quasi-industrial use, and you have to have certain structural features of it. And you probably can wrap a nice New England-type shell over it, but, you know, again, I don't know sort of where your constraints are, and so how can we go, best go back and forth with you on this?
Well, part of what we're looking at for tonight is to have this conversation with you guys. We've made an application, kind of get the feel from the board, so George has a, has a pretty good level of comfort that if we go forward, it's something that's probably, was very, going to be likely going to get, get approval. So that he has, he can go ahead and finish the deal with, with approves. In regards to the building itself, he needs a minimum of about eighteen feet of interior height to be able to lift the cars up and work on them and bring them back down. So no matter what we do, we have a height elevation that we need inside that building from, from slab up. Relative to the roof line, relative to, you know, again, Jean and I talked about this, and we took pictures of, of the facility next door. You know, and it had, it has, you know, different features and so forth. You know, we, we could, we could try to put those into that as well. And we have, the height constraint here is thirty-five feet, and, and this is only twenty, twenty-two feet high. So we're, we're trying to keep it as low as possible, recognizing that this is an area that, you know, we don't want this to look like an industrial building, but it has a certain use that we're going to need to incorporate.
Just a silly suggestion, make it look like a barn.
We could make it look like a barn. There's.
At least blend with the building next door, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, do we allow metal facades in our bylaw? I don't think we do even.
No, no, they're allowed to.
Does the metal?
I mean, yeah, because obviously, like, over by the airport with the, you know, where the plane hangers are, metals, sort of thing, so there are some.
So in terms of what you just said too, Jean and I talked, and I've talked to George, we're more than, he's more than willing to try to get, get these colors the same, so it looks similar.
Oh, okay, good, yeah, I think something along that line would be an idea. Well, I was going to say, there's probably any number of ones, Jean, that you could point to in town that are things that, where we've tried to, you know, even the, the service station across from Lucan, I think, got done, you know, and it's, the colors aren't very nice. But, you know, the, the basic structure of the building wasn't all that bad, and, you know, it was a similar type.
We had to start somewhere.
Yeah.
So that, that's why you have that in the package, because it's part of, part of the application process, we had to give that to you, so we had to start.
From there.
What's that?
You can only conclude from there, so.
You can't get it.
That's.
I have a question about.
Can't get worse.
How many seats is it going to have in it? What's your proposal?
It wasn't many, it was.
I think it was like sixteen seats or less, or something like that.
So the parking.
The parking is fine?
Yeah, yeah, fifteen, yeah, fifteen or sixteen feet, something like that.
On the parking, I have an issue with that first parking space. When you come in off of 114, I think that space should be eliminated, yeah.
Which one?
We don't want to have queuing on 114.
This one here? Yeah, we, we have, we have more than we need, so if we need to eliminate one, we could do that as well.
Because if someone's backing out.
Backing out, it's pretty.
Pulling out, they're going to, someone's going to run into them.
Yeah, what's interesting is, is we've had the, the traffic engineer take a look at it as well, Tep LLC. He's written a letter, which is in your packet. The, the, the use for the car repair relative to the use for the restaurant are time different.
Right.
So, and, and the car repair does not generate much traffic at all. In, in this case, I think it was less than a hundred trips max. So e- even with this parking that you have here, if this parking is utilized, we're just trying to get as much parking in front for when the restaurant is, and again, it's, it's not very many seats, so we expect them to get in and out.
Is the car repair going to do oil changes, or it's like a body repair?
It's general car repair.
So it's oil changes, they will get, I mean, I didn't have Monroe Oil Place on 114, and it's a disaster.
It's not a body shop, is it?
No, yeah, it's, it's not a body shop, no.
So, I mean, if they're doing oil changes, there is going to be a fair amount of traffic there. On a weekend, there's going to be cars going in and out, in and out.
Well, I can have George answer that, I don't know whose business how he actually ends up using. Do you, George, let him know.
Good evening, everyone. I mean, yeah, the weekend, usually on Saturdays, we get a few oil changes, that's when people that are not working, and they come in. But it's not the, you know, it's, we usually open half a day through one o'clock, and we might do probably ten oil changes, let's say, twelve oil changes. It's not that crazy, it's not like people stand in line and make it very crowded. And usually pretty quick, you know, oil changes, ten, fifteen minutes, especially when you have six lifts. There's always one open, goes in and out, it's done.
So you're just going to have one big door that opens?
Right. I didn't want it to look too.
Out to the six lifts once they're inside?
Correct. I didn't want it to look too industrial and have six bays, so dear concept. One door goes in and one go, one door goes out on the other side.
So they'll drive in, make a right-hand turn, and go over to, go to over?
It basically goes in from the front, and the lifts, they're going to be kind of like in the back of the building. And it's going to be like three lifts on the side, three lifts on the side. And so when the car goes in, it's either go left or right, and when it's done, they back up and go out.
And the backing up and everything else is done by his guys, it's not?
Yeah, there's no customers inside.
Get inside.
I do have a question about how you currently handle the fluids that come out of the cars that you're referring, brake fluid, oil, transmission.
Usually everything gets recycled, gets picked, gets picked up by environmental people. Oil and antifreeze and.
You have those things on wheels?
Yes, 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 of course.
And the other thing here is George uses all the used oil for heat.
Right. We recycle all the oil and we use it for heat.
That, that drive space between the front and the back, it just looks really small, maybe it's just the picture, and I'm not used to reading these things, but that's going to be two-way traffic?
No, no.
Or it's one-way traffic?
So, so, basically one-way traffic, what's going to happen is you come in, it's going to come out.
Yeah.
That's really it. The only time it's going to be two-way traffic is when the dump, the guy comes to do the dumpster. So he's going to come in, do that backup, and go out.
Just so you know, the dumpster can't be there, the, you saw the letter from the building, health department has to be twenty feet from a structure, so.
Yeah, this is the, so, I did the math.
Is it twenty? I don't think so.
No, no, the, the concrete is, is with a twenty, but I'm going to, I have to relocate it and move it further. But I, actually, it was, was an interesting question, I'm going to talk to the health department about that, because this is, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter, we're going to put food stuff in there anyway, so it'll be twenty feet off the building.
Just sticking with the fluids for a minute, but there are always accidents where there are spills. How, how do you keep that out of the sewer?
Spills?
Spills.
I mean, usually inside the shop, there's no drainage or anything. So everything gets picked up, you know, if, if there is a, if for some reason gets spilled on the floor, we have racks that we use to pick it up and.
Cap litter stuff.
Right, either that, or we have some kind of towels they made for that. Absorbs everything and gets recycled by environmental people, like.
Not planning to have drains inside.
Yeah, I don't know.
No, and actually, George and I talked, he's not going to be washing cars or anything else in here.
No.
So this is strictly car repair.
Yeah.
Any thinking about exterior signs at this point, and what that would look like, and where they'd be placed?
Jean and I talked about that, and it will meet the zoning, but probably on the side, on Turnpike Street, so you can see it as you come by, driving by.
So in the elevation, the, the current thinking of sign, that, you know, how, how that would be placed, that's, I mean, could you show us on the elevation what you're thinking about for the sign?
We, we will, we can, I just.
Yeah.
We've got to figure out kind of what the building needs to look like.
I see, okay.
Before we do that. So what, what, what this, what this accomplishes here is let you guys know that the, the general size of the building that, that is going to need for the repair inside.
Yeah.
The other side there is just essentially keeping that same roof line, so that you had something that looked similar, and that's the restaurant on the right-hand side. The door, again, the door in the middle, that's, that's your in, and you go to the next elevation, and the door on the back side, that's a door out. So depending on what we want to do, how we're going to, how we're going to configure this building, what, how do we, how do we go about that? Does it, would it be something that we would?
I think, yeah, we'll work with Jean on that. We're very appreciative of that colloquial approach, but I think, you know, she could give any number of ideas of, of things we think might work. And obviously, we're sensitive to the fact of your use, so let's just try to figure out a way to marry the two, so we can have something that's.
Yes, no problem.
Reasonably pleasing aesthetically.
Yeah. Height is an issue for us, it can't be too short because of.
Right, yeah. But it's not like you're putting apartments on the second floor or anything like that, so.
No, no.
As far as groundwater, this, we do not have a written letter in this area yet, so that still has a list to go.
Right, so I would suspect there's probably not much in the way of issues related to drainage, I would think. I don't know.
They've added a lot of the pervy surface.
Well, that's right, they've added a pervy surface, so that, that will.
Yeah, so I, I have talked to Lisa, and I did explain what we're, what we're planning on doing. We've talked about the roof runoff, putting that into the ground, that type of stuff, whether or not we would utilize any type of porous pavement to, to be able to help in the back and so forth. So we're looking at that right now. We haven't got that report finished yet, but that, that's our next step too, getting that off to Lisa. I haven't read that. So that, that's the proposal in general, that, that's what we're looking to do. And I guess any real heartburn associated with what we're proposing, it is an allowed use. Setbacks, I understand the building size as well, we'll make sure that that comes out to the twenty-five feet, so there's no question about that. In terms of the use of the building, we got that covered. In terms of the look of the building, we'll work with Jean, come up with something that's a little bit more color-wise, or even if there's.
Yeah, I don't know, once we get that, I mean, you know, we can decide on the, you know, the.
You guys don't like, I don't understand why you don't like.
Oh, my God.
So, yeah, no, that, that's good. I think once you have that, if you agree sort of on colors and look and feel, you could figure out, you know, whether you want to tweak the fencing and tweak the landscaping a little bit.
Well, let's talk about the fencing. So our idea was to, to give that visual barrier along that edge there. Leaving, leaving the trees on Berry Street, leaving the trees and all the grass we have here, and putting landscaping at the far end. Again, six-foot-high, solid white fence is what we're thinking of. We got no problem if you, if, we don't even need to put a fence in there. The only reason why I put a fence in there was just because of visual barrier.
So do you have to break it out to the McLeys, Flora's, or Paul's, that type of design? Are you comfortable with the fudruckers also having?
Something like that, I mean, you know, you could do, so, I mean, like, yeah, the fudruckers one's a good example, because that's a combination of split fence and hedge.
Right, and McLeys is similar too, it's, you know, a slot, but it's got hedges across the front.
Yeah, I mean, there's enough examples.
Hedges across the front will prevent the banners from.
Yeah.
Spreading across it, which is the problem with fudruckers, so by putting strawberry in front of it, it prevents that.
So maybe you do a little bit of a combination of both, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's what I was thinking, but again, this is.
Okay, that's good.
It's been iterative to now.
Yeah, but the fence was, that was just.
If it's pretty.
Very near. If you have a fence.
So, yeah, we could, I think, Jean, we got some ideas that we could share with you. Again, we don't want you to get a huge expense, but we think there's a couple of things we could do, you know. Maybe what you do is, like we said, some places, there's a combination of low hedges and, you know, fence, and they work kind of nicely together and, you know, it's pretty neat, so.
So what do, what kind of landscape plan?
Yeah, that shows that. Okay, good. Yeah, but just work with Jean, and we appreciate your willing to collaborate with us, so. Any other questions before we move on?
Nope, so Lisa has everything she needs at this point, though?
I don't, I don't think so. Well, let's see. Is there anybody from the audience that wants to speak about this one? See a lot of people here, so, uh, come right up and you're, identify yourself for the record and we'll go from there.
Eric Loaf, twelve Lavender Circle, I'm here, I'm in a butter at sixteen Berry Street, across the street, the new apartment project. Just wanted to come. I'd seen, I think, the plans online and was just concerned about the height of the fence for two reasons primarily. One, I thought it might block visibility of the project we're building, so that's my selfish aspect. And two, for a lot of people who are trying to come up Berry Street, trying to take a left if there's a fence of that height, I think your idea of maybe a split rail or picket fence that's a little bit lower might be a little safer for people trying to come up because the applicant said, we're changing this intersection to make it a ninety-degree angle, but there's gonna be two lanes coming out, so you're still gonna have people queuing to try to take a left. I think if there's a tall fence here that's wrapping around, I think the visual impediment might be a problem there.
Okay, fair enough.
Those really may only, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, appreciate it.
So we.
But, yeah, I think, yeah, you didn't hear any naysayers, did you?
No.
Yeah, so, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Okay, moving right along, further down Turnpike Street. This is very exciting.
Yep, you guys are all set?
Turnpike Street's the hot spot. Twenty-three oh-two Turnpike Street. What's going on here, Jean?
So, I just want to make sure that the applicant had a conflicting meeting. Chris, do you want to start without Jill, or do you want us to have the discussion item first? It's up to you. Okay.
Okay, then we will flip around. Sixteen seventy-nine Osgood Street. What's going on there?
Okay, sixteen seventy-nine Osgood Street. The applicant is here. Lynn, I don't think you have the locus here, but sixteen seventy-nine is the original parcel for the Stanton Way subdivision, so it's across the street from Lucian, sixteen hundred Osgood Street now.
The Stanton Way, but it doesn't go.
So Stanton Way started with a parcel of land, which was a residential lot on Osgood Street, and it had this large parcel behind it, off of Bradford Street, they were entering to the subdivision.
Right, because you enter into it off of Bradford Street. This is the one we took for.
Yes, yes, so I thought it would be memorable, and I have the locus, but.
And then we added a lot, right?
And then we added a lot to Chris Adams behind.
Yeah.
I.
Okay.
Lynn, wait a minute. I have, I have connection. Hold on.
Oh, voila.
Oh, yeah, I hope so. So, what has transpired is the applicant, well, Chad Lala and his brother Corey have recently purchased the lot, so that's, now you can't see because I'm not connected.
Okay.
They purchased it with the intent to relocate their landscaping business to this site. However, what was found out subsequent to that was the use is not allowed in the CDD III zone. So the CDD III was established in two thousand and eight. The use.
So this lot is not part of the subdivision, it's just.
It is not, right, so it was broken off from the subdivision, but it was the original parcel.
Oh, 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 yeah.
So if you remember, the name was Nellie Saracusa at the time. That's who permitted it originally. There are several structures on the lot, so there's a house up front.
Yep.
There's an apartment unit behind it. I think this is a shed, the smaller piece off to the left, and another, again, accessory building using, being used as an apartment today in the rear of the lot. So they have purchased the property. Their intent was to relocate the landscaping business when the building permit came through.
Okay, good, so.
The use is not allowed currently, so Kevin.
The landscaping is not allowed use.
Right.
Okay, got it.
So Kevin Foley is here representing the Lawlers, and he'd like.
Mr. Jean, members of the board. Thank you, Jean, for having us on the agenda. I was not involved with, when Mr. Lala purchased the property. I was just recently involved, and really, and just so you know, I'm a, I'm a citizen of North Andover fifty-two Hewitt Ave, and I'm also an attorney. I have a law practice in Newburyport, Massachusetts, and I do represent Chad Lala, who owns that property, as Jean indicated. And what we're really here tonight to talk about, and there's no, we don't have any sort of proposal, just for discussion purposes, only trying to get some feedback and direction, really, from the board, is whether there'd be any interest in terms of preferences or questions or concerns or objections to adding landscaping to this area, this, this CDD III district. There are, that I know of, at least three existing landscaping companies within that corridor from the time you pass Holt Road until you go out to, past the storage facility. Some of those were, I think, in existence. One of the owners of one of those properties is here tonight, Tyler Monroe. And Mr., I should say, Mr. Lala is here, Chad Lala and his brother Corey Lala are here, too. You may want to have some questions for them. So we're really on a fact-finding, and I know, I'm sensitive to the fact that you have other agenda items and we're ten days out from Christmas, so I appreciate the time. But we really want to hear from you, from the members of the board, about your preferences, your questions, your concerns and objections. Should a, should we bring a proposal with a warrant article to add landscaping to this area?
So, Tyler, where's your business on this?
Right next door. I have sixteen fifty-nine, and I used to have sixteen thirty-five.
Okay.
So. And, and an existing landscaper is.
Yeah, but I, I, but I'll, I'll.
Yeah, okay.
But I've got the background.
So I'm trying to, okay, got it. So you're right next door.
So it's right, really, right across from the second entrance to Lucian, the yellow blinker light.
Tyler, I have actually no problem with you. You want to come right up here with me? Because you have a lot, he has a lot of perspective from this.
Pete, do you have any questions just about, you know, what's going on here, or familiar with the area, you know?
I don't know where the area is. No questions yet. Still listening. There's no proposal or anything like that. I'm just wondering, are there any objections?
Yeah, I guess, it's, when we say landscaping business, I take it it's, this is probably an oversimplification. It's a series of trucks and vehicles and tools and piles of mulch, right?
And I should say, Mr. Lala has been in the landscaping business for twenty-one years.
I mean, yeah.
So he's pretty versed in the area, but certainly Tyler, don't mind sharing.
I'm Tyler Monroe, okay, so I own sixteen thirty-five, which I sold, now I own sixteen fifty-nine. So that whole area used to be industrial-esque, and we were all forced down there because that was the only place for a contractor's yard, IE landscaper. And then in two thousand and seven, when they did the overlay at Lucian, we kind of all said, well, what about us over here? You know, and so they did that, and Kurt did a good job on it, and I think I was probably one of the only ones at every meeting as an industrial-esque guy. And, you know, I think I dropped the ball at the end because I know at the meetings, I didn't zone myself out, which is what happened there now, and, you know. So what I do there is not allowed there now. I mean, I'm grandfathered in, but, you know, Chad isn't and everything, and they changed the zoning to make it more attractive as it was across the street. But it was supposed to be in addition to kind of what's there now, which is landscaping and a contractor's yard. And I think I kind of dropped the ball at the end when I didn't go to town meeting and see how it was finally written because I went to every meeting with Kurt, and he did a great job on the zoning, except for.
Right, yeah, I mean, I do remember, and I gotta go back and look at it again, but I think we were trying to provide for more of a variety of uses over there, so if.
Yeah, in addition to.
Because that was the time we were gonna do the Osgard, and.
Lucian has surged, Lucian has surged down. That side of one twenty-five does not, and so I think you're limited in what you're really gonna get in there. It's, it's eight years since you did the zoning.
Right, well, unless they put five hundred industrial units over there, it's probably gonna stay the way.
Right, and it was all in that time when they were gonna put them in there, and then the sewer was gonna come down, and it was gonna go across the street, and then, you know, we could have strip malls on that side, and so you know what happened to that. I mean, there's no sewer, and it's like, there's not even voted on a plan for a sewer. So that's why I sold one piece, because it's like, you know, as Tim Lutz said, not in your lifetime.
We didn't even vote to fund the study to be a plan.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah. So, I mean, it just, but all of the meetings were, they were adding to the current zoning, which was industrial-esque, and, but it definitely was not to like abolish industrial-esque and to go to this. And I kind of feel responsible that I was the only one at the meeting, and they were great meetings, in Kurt's office, but when it finally got written through the lawyers, all of a sudden, what we do isn't in there.
It's the lawyers.
I think it's the lawyers. Anyway, that's, that's the history on it. That's how all the landscaping ended up there, and.
And I wasn't involved with that history story. My question to all of you is, what to do now? What's my margin, what are my margin orders?
It, it, just a couple of questions. I am right that basically, when you're talking about sort of, if it's a landscaping business, it's a series of trucks, pieces of equipment and tools and, you know, maybe some mulch and dirt piles. I mean, is that basically what we're talking about?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it used to be called a contractor's yard.
Yeah.
Well, here's the uses: retail, restaurants, personal service, indoor recreation, fitness, healthcare facility, indoor place of amusement, outdoor place of amusement, public building, professional offices, medical center, research, printing, reproduction, warehouse, wholesale, motel, motel, art gallery, center, cultural center, museum, place of worship, daycare center, or mixed-use development. Landscaping doesn't fit into it, but.
No, what I'm trying to figure out is a little bit, this is, was helpful because I had, I had sort of, this is one that I had a major on about.
The master plan of this area.
Yeah, I think it was, it made sense, but I thought that this was an overlay and the underlying uses still remained. Did we actually rezone?
Three zones, CDD III, so.
Oh, it's completely rezoned, so we never, it wasn't an overlay, it was a zoning.
Right, so Turnpike Street has CDD I and II on opposite sides of Turnpike, and then, which happened in, I think, oh-two.
Right, and I was, I remember that one. I mean, nobody else was, we used to, that one, we used to walk up and down the street like, you know, we must have had ten sidewalks on that property.
Ten minutes on that.
That stretch, but, yeah, this is okay. So it was rezoning, not an overlay, so.
So with this, I guess we would anticipate outdoor storage would be required as well as part of the use.
Like that, yes.
So, in addition to landscaping business, most of the CDDs restrict outside storage, so that would have to be accounted for as well, if it was gonna be changed.
And, and if, you know, just hypothetically, if you were going to go into this property, would you keep all the buildings, you know, that you would have today, okay?
They're actually.
They have a permit to build in the building?
Currently adding another structure as a residential garage at this time.
Okay.
Because the use is only residential, so.
I forget the dimensions in that, Jean. It's a pretty good size.
It's a large twenty.
Two thousand square.
Two thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Between the first building and the second building.
Yeah, okay.
So when the use was, if it was to change and be at allowed use, site plan would be triggered because the use would be changing. And coincidentally, at this time, as you know, last meeting, we voted to have a representative on the committee to look at the Osgard bylaw again, so I guess the timing is coming up at the same time again. The Board of Selectmen has created a committee looking at, across the street, at the Osgard and that whole bylaw.
Okay.
As far as I know, that's limited to that side of the street.
So does anybody have any questions, comments about this?
I don't think this is, unfortunately, I don't think this was a master plan, and it somewhat defeats the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish in that area, which is why we're revisiting Osgood.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think you're right from the point of view that I think the logic went, okay, we're gonna do the Osgard, and the Osgard was gonna be this knock-'em-dead, mixed-use thing, and yet, our zoning in that entire area was basically old-school industrial zoning, so let's create a new zoning type for that area that's more in line with what the future uses are gonna be. The reality of the situation, as I hate to use that term, but.
The economy took a crash.
Is that the transition to what we thought was gonna happen has not occurred. You know, that's, that's the fact of the matter.
But is it because of the economy? We haven't given it the right time to give up on it now?
It's been eight years, no doubt.
And what, what happened eight years ago, or two thousand?
Eight years ago, you had Peter Breen there, you still have Peter Breen. You have Tyler Monroe there, you still have Tyler Monroe. There's no landscaping happening there.
No, I understand that, but we've also, we had the biggest housing crash in the, in the history of the country.
Yeah, but, but I mean, the, the point ends up being is that the process that we have to go through is, we have to look at all the properties out there with, does the vision still make sense? Does the plan that we did a few years ago still make sense? And, you know, I think we, we have to listen to what individual landowners are asking, but we don't have to be, everything we do determined on that because we're looking at the broader interests of the town. So we have to balance this request in line with.
I think, just to add this use to what the other uses that are permissible. So if, if the market bears that somebody wants to come along and buy his property and put in a hotel or whatever, I mean, I'm sure he would sell it for the right price. So we're just talking about allowing another use. We're not saying like it has to be a landscape. We're not shutting out other uses.
That was written when Kurt did it. It was kind of like, okay, so, you know, they were gonna do the six hundred apartments or whatever across the street, and remember the sewer was gonna come, and they were gonna give the town an easement through there, and it was all great and everything, and, you know. But fast forward, like I said, the sewer isn't, it's not even a dream down there, and, you know, but it was also, okay, so, well, you guys, in addition, can sell your land for that if you want. You know, there's no drive-throughs, but you can have a restaurant, so it gives us another option over there rather than the industrial-esque, you know. But it was not supposed to push out all the industrial-esque, which, you know, was the only part in town that had it. That's why we're all down there, anyway. You know, as I sat at the meetings, I know it wasn't an overlay, but it was kind of of that tone.
Yeah, okay. So Jean, how do you recommend we sort of take this under advisement?
Well, I mean, it's gonna require a warrant article, and the time's getting close, so I guess the opt, the favor, the applicant would be.
Yeah, I mean, you have, you have an option to, you know, as a citizen, you know well that you can put in a zoning article. Obviously, it's easier with our support, and I think we're willing to work with you on this, but I think, as you can see, we still want a little bit more time to think about it.
I'm really open. I know, I'm really sensitive to the idea of just coming in with Mr. Lala's property and say, can we do something with that? I thought from a public policy standpoint, this probably made a little bit more sense. I'll probably have a similar conversation with the Board of Selectmen if I can, but I certainly, if you, if you want me to draft up something and bring it back in for further discussion, I'd be glad to do that.
Well, I mean, I think what you're, you know, why I think you said it exactly is, it's just adding use to the district. So I, I think we know enough about that. The, you know, we just need to think about whether that, does that create a problem with the direction we're going in or not?
I mean, the district is already probably sixty percent that use anyway.
Well, that's, yeah.
You know, as it sits, and that's, that is.
I mean, I do know there's, yeah, there's.
And the current use is the best use down there right now.
Yeah, this is a storage facility down there.
A veterinary hospital.
Yeah.
Like a pizza place.
Two or three landscapers.
Yeah. Use car dealership.
Yeah, so. Got it, so, I, I think maybe.
You just don't think there's any other alternatives?
Maybe it's worth, come the beginning of the year, thinking a little bit more broadly and maybe have an ER come in sometime to talk about. I mean, we, we've talked about, you know, we haven't done a master plan in a long time, and master plan is a huge deal, and, you know.
And he's looking towards all of it.
But we ought to at least get his ideas of what he's thinking and where he wants to go, when this stuff. Can you get him to come in in January sometime?
Who was that, Chuck?
The, the Perts successor.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Community Development Director.
So we could put that in the next agenda.
Yeah.
Kevin, we should talk about draft language, kind of what you guys are thinking. I mean, the only alternative is to rezone the parcel, which, that's not a viable option, or to add a use. And we talked about those two options.
Yeah.
And it's whether it comes at the recommendation of the planning board versus a citizen petition.
Yeah.
I think in most cases, we prefer to have a favorable recommendation to anything that's gonna be changed in the warrant.
Thank you again for putting us on the agenda.
Yep, thank you.
In touch. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. So. So, 2302 Turnpike Street is the corner of Sharpeners Pond Road and 114. The applicant's attorney is not here yet, she's at a meeting in Hamilton.
Is this the, the lot that's too small?
It is not, it's over three and a half acres.
Okay, okay.
And currently, it has two structures on it. This proposal would demolish the two existing structures.
Oh, is this the one where the school is?
Across the street is the daycare.
Where the daycare is, where's the daycare?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get this.
Okay.
So.
Oh, wow, 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 this is where we're going to build the skating rink, right?
At one time, I believe, it was going there.
Yeah, okay. I thought there was a small parcel right on the corner there, that's why I was asked. I remember years ago, there's a tiny little parcel I thought was on the corner.
It was, and whether it got incorporated into this lot, I'm not positive, so the current owner of this lot is Kevin Murphy. Again, the applicant is hoping to purchase the lot contingent upon permitting. There's two existing structures, they're very hard to see here, that would be demolished and replaced with.
Where are they?
Do you see it right underneath that 2302?
Yeah, but is it a house?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Jean, I can, would you like me to go ahead and do the, do a presentation?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
All right, Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Chris Sparrages, I'm a civil engineer with offices right next door in Middleton, the offices of Williams and Sparrages, celebrating our fifth year in business around on 114, not too far down the road. Attorney Jill Mann, who's, who is the project attorney, as, as Jean mentioned, is held up at a public hearing in, in Hamilton, but we can get started and introduce you to the property and the proposal. With us here tonight is the applicant representing Earthworks Incorporated, Mr. Danny Gill, and also present, supporting his son, is Mr. Norman, Norman Gill, both long residents of North, North Andover. The other project, the other members of the project team include Mr. Eric Dalen, the architect, and our office provided the civil insight and survey work. As Jean mentioned, the property is located right as you enter the, the town of North Andover, at the intersection of Turnpike Street or Route 114 and Sharpeners Pond Road. The orientation of the site plan over to my right, Route 114 runs up and down the plan this way, north is that way. You can see in the, the north corner of the property, there is a, a small wetland area on the property, and because we're going to be working within 100 feet of that wetland, we've also filed simultaneously with the Conservation Commission. We'll be appearing before them tomorrow night for our first public hearing, and just beyond the wetland.
You've got, by the way, just, it looks like some of the conservation issues might be tough. My impression of that lot was that it was pretty wet?
Actually, out of, of the three and a half acres, only about approximately 11, 11% of the property is wet, and it's just that back corner.
Oh, okay, you stand corrected.
Yeah, that back corner. Our wetland scientist, Gregory Hockmoth, flagged the wetland, and it's been reviewed with, with Jen Hughes, and we'll be going into that a little bit, in a little bit more detail at our hearing tomorrow night. The, the subject property, as I said, is about three and a half acres of land, right on the corner here, and there are some unusual aspects of Sharpeners Pond Road, although the traveled way that we drive up and down from time to time is rather narrow, the actual width of the right-of-way is 150 feet. It was laid out years ago, obviously down to the, to the, to the municipal site. Similarly, with 114, that, the layout of that road is approximately 80, 80 feet wide. The site also sits quite, quite lower than the highway. Up at the highway, if you will, the land slopes from uphill, it slopes downhill in this direction, but from the highway, there's, there's no curving on this side of the highway, and so the drainage from this section of the highway actually comes onto our property, as does the drainage along Sharpeners Pond Road, from about the center line of the pavement, which the pavement is shown in this darker color, also comes onto our property, and we're quite a bit lower than the surrounding streets. And so the proposal is to sort of pick up the site a little bit, but even when we do, the site is actually still going to be lower than both the highway and Sharpeners Pond Road. So we're not proposing to change the drainage pathways, but we are trying to build up the site a little bit so that as folks come down from Middleton and enter North Andover, they'll be able to see this beautiful new building. The property is zone B2, and it's fairly square, it, you know, measures about 400 by 400 feet, that's that dark, the dark magic, black magic marker, if you will. In addition, in the existing condition, we have an existing, a couple of existing structures that are dilapidated and really can't be turned into a, a commercial use, and our hope, our, our plan, of course, is to demolish those structures and abandon what is an existing septic system and tie into, to both town water and town sewer on the project. These utilities are available to us right at the intersection of the two roads. We've been working closely with Mr. Tim Lutz about how exactly we're going to connect to both the water, water and sewer, so this building will be served by both of those utilities. So, the proposed building, that footprint is rather large, it's about 15,000 square feet, but it does fit nicely on the property from a lot coverage standpoint. The main building, which is the brown L-shaped, and this out, outbuilding here, which is primarily, it's storage, covers about 13, 14% of the property, much less than the maximum lot coverage. And what we're, what we're proposing to do, what Mr. Gill's proposing to do in terms of the uses, as I mentioned earlier, his company, Earthworks Incorporated, which is also headquartered here in town, is a landscaping business, and he has had a need to move out of his space and plans to expand his primary business at this location and allow for other tradespeople in, in similar businesses to set up small retail outlets in a portion of the building. I'm going to just pull up the architectures just real quick so that you can get a feel for that. So we have this L shape, and the primary building, and a large portion of the building is, is centrally located here. There's some elevation drawings that show that. This is that, that main part, that's sort of the corner, and then we have a wing on this side, and then a wing on that side. And in this main building is, is where Mr. Gill is proposing to have this retail and office/business service uses in that main portion of the building. On the lower level of that central portion, I think, here comes the, I was turning it on, it's okay. In that main portion of the building, there is a lower level, because as I mentioned, the property drops from the street level out towards the back of the property, and so it naturally wants to be a walkout, and so in that central portion of the building, right in here, there's going to be a basement level of storage, and then these two wings are also garage/storage space that will support the primary uses. You can see those wings left and right, so from the 114 and Sharpeners Pond side, you'll be able to see that level, which is essentially one and a half story bay garages. On the backside of the building, if you're standing in the parking area in the back, looking at the back of the building, you can see those wings a little bit easier, and you can see what their, what their primary use is, it's going to be a series of garage doors that will access about one and a half stories of open garage space. The breakdown that we expect to have inside the building at this point, and here's Attorney Mann, for the retail space, we have approximately 4,200 square feet, for the office/business services, again, just about 4,000 square feet, and then the storage, which includes the entire lower level footprint and the out, the outbuilding, measure approximately 20,325 square feet.
So that would be the primary use, wouldn't it? How could that be an accessory use?
Well, Mr. Gill's business and the tradespeople that are going to be using the retail space will use that storage space for vehicles and their materials.
The accessory use is the retail use, the primary use is the, the warehousing use.
So we're going to change?
Do we have a, a use problem here?
No.
Why?
It, it allows for retail component.
Yeah, that's not the primary, but the, the other use is the primary use, that, that.
For storage?
That storage use is, is.
I think I probably can address it.
Okay, go ahead, open up.
If you can identify yourself.
I absolutely will. Jill Mann, attorney for the applicant, Earthworks, Inc. I apologize for my tardiness, I was in Hamilton and didn't realize the length of time it takes to get from here to here, from there to here. Relative to the use, we did actually preview this with both Ms. Enright, as well as Mr. Brown, the building inspector, and the zoning enforcement officer, and what we had described was in fact that, that Mr. Gill would be using the property primarily for his landscape contracting office as well as a retail space. So what he would like to do is actually have a component where people come in and can see, you know, kind of like, if you will, pictures almost of his work, so you walk into the retail setting, and that's where you'd actually look at various materials and make a determination as to what you'd really like to incorporate into your job, if you will. The offices, as is delineated on the plans that we had sent to you, are all around the interior portion of the building. The actual storage and in-ground parking is accessory solely to those uses. Accessory is something that it would actually be supplemental to or used as a part of an operation of the work.
Yeah, but if it's the predominantly use.
It is not the predominant use.
No, no, it's the predominant amount of square footage.
That is not what it designates predominant use. For example, you can have, I mean, any kind of a use, it's what is the active part of the business. The active part of the business is actually the office space. There is no outdoor storage, the storage is only associated with the actual office use, and in fact, your zoning enforcement officer has said that it is compliant, and so.
Well, I, I, the leaps of logic, I don't get it. I mean, I frankly, I, you can't have a predominant use.
Here's our definition.
Yeah.
A use or structure subordinate to the principal use of a building on the same lot and serving, serving a purpose customally incidental to the use of the principal building. Incidental, I mean.
It's not incidental, it's, it's, it's.
It most certainly is incidental because they.
Well, who, who else, let me ask you a question. There's like eight doors at the back of this thing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Right? They're going to be rented to different people, right?
Some of them will, predominantly they'll be used by Mr. Gill, but yeah, some of them will be, and those people will have offices in the building.
And so that's a primary use, and they'd have to pay rent for that, so.
Oh, of course.
So, so I guess, I guess we don't have to go for zoning change for the other, where they could just put a little retail business in and say that this is accessory use, we have a solution to their problem. They should have stayed for this.
Yeah, I didn't look at the accessory use being in terms of scale, that's not how I interpreted it. It's not how I interpreted it.
Sorry, I mean, the building inspector may have said what he said, but this is not, the accessory use is the predominant use.
But it is not, and I can explain why.
Well, you could.
Well, I mean, you need.
Good luck, knock yourself out, but.
But I mean, I have to tell you that when your zoning enforcement officer gives it an opinion.
Well, just give us the logic yourself of why.
And that's my point.
Okay.
So essentially, what the use is going to be is not storage, we're not taking anybody's products in, we're not storing it, we merely have it as associated with sometimes the
use that Mr. Gill will have. The predominant portion of his business is landscape design, the predominant amount of money is going to be yielded, not from bringing out immaterials, he has materials on site, well, most certainly that he'll use at times, but the amount of, for example, if you wanted to base it on dollars and how much that actual storage amount is going to be used, it will be a fraction of what he generates in sales, a fraction, because the materials are simply incidental to what he actually does. Another example would be the delivery, so how often do you even get deliveries of anything? Quite frankly, maybe we're going to get deliveries, what, couple of times a season? It's not, it's not like we provide any kind of wholesale business, we don't, nobody, you can't come in and buy it.
So, can, can you do us a favor and give us the square footage breakdown of the property and the uses?
We did in your, of course we do, in your application, it definitely has it.
Can you just tell us what that is?
Yes, of course.
I think there's another problem with your analysis though, because the principal structure by our definition or bylaws is the structure on a lot of record which contains the principal, primary use of the law. A principal use shall not be contained within, within an accessory structure as defined in the bylaws. If you're saying that the outbuildings are accessory, that, that those are the principal buildings, that means the retail would be not the main use.
No, it's actually exactly what you said, so that all of the principal uses are in the primary building, which is the center building.
Okay, so if you could tell us what it is.
So it actually works well with that definition.
Actually, it works the opposite.
You said, though, that the principal structure is actually the main structure where all the retail and the offices are located, and you can see how they're delineating.
Which contains the primary use.
And that area is actually for that, each building, so the ground floor is about 15,000 square feet, the office space, and I broke it down in here. So we have retail use of about 4,200 square feet, we have office use of about 4,000 square feet, and then we have storage with the two separate buildings of 26,000 square feet. We absolutely do.
Okay, so if I had to, same setup, but instead of 20,000 of storage space, I had 20,000 of manufacturing, would that be the same thing?
If you have manufacturing, that's an active use, this is simply accessory to his use, there is.
But, but it's accessory because there, it's accessory to the retail use of selling the stuff.
That actually is not true, because you actually actively manufacture, so you'd have to tell me.
Okay.
So for example, if you have a distribution center?
I have a question.
Oh, of course.
What are all the bays for in the back of the building? You have.
To tell the truth, and I have all your stuff for you, sir. We haven't, we haven't figured it out yet.
Well, I mean, there's a going to be, you said that.
Well, we could, we, we, no, we could, we could have another contractor, a related contractor come in and use one of the bays for related business of some sort. I could store some, I could, I could, no, I could store some cars in there, I mean, I'm actually thinking about storing specialty cars in there.
But are you going to charge rent for that storage space?
Not necessarily, that's not true, I, I haven't discovered.
I'm not necessarily sure.
See, no, no, I'm, 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 maybe speaking out loud, I hope I'm not, but I, I have a, a nice business going over here in North Andover as well, and this is something I want to do for my family and my son, so he can get his business, you know, going again, and I'm really excited about putting a real pretty structure there. And what I, what I want to do personally, out of the main building, I'm going to sell services, I'm going to start a brokerage company, and I'm just going to sell contracting services to the town of North Andover. Someone wants to come in and get a painter or plumber, you know, you know, someone to put a fence up, you know, paving, you can go to one spot, it'll be right there on the corner of North Andover, when you come into town, and it's going to be a beautiful facility, no, no costs spared, so you can come in town and, and someone says, geez, I need a light hung tomorrow night, oh, you can come in and get electrician from, from this, we'll have a group of contractors and really professionally done, and then the rest of the building, you know, seeing that we have such a nice site, we're actually, we're building some space, and then we'll, we'll fill it up down the road. I don't know exactly, we haven't, we haven't got any contracts, I haven't got any intent, so.
But what's the accessory building for that?
The accessory building, the small building?
Well, how's, I don't know how small, how small.
Well, the, the accessory building would be for stor, storage of mater, storage of some, some materials for his business.
And how big is that building?
Are you, are you asking?
I don't, yeah, I don't see.
Yes.
I can't see.
Yes. Yeah, that'd be, that's a storage building, again, maybe I'm speaking out loud, I'm just, I'm just dad.
Okay.
You know, for, for, for business usage of, of materials to, to run his business.
Okay.
On, on, you know, which is not, it's not a lot, it's a few things.
Okay, I just, I just want to know what sounds.
That's, I mean, that's, so as far, as far as, you know.
Can I, can I totally shift gears here, because I'm looking at the picture, now I see what it looks like, the other one I wasn't. It almost looks like a ski chalet or something. I mean, I, I don't know, it's, it, am I missing, what is it? It looks like it's a big house or something.
But we tried to, we were trying to get it to look like something that would be kind of cool to be in North Andover, but I mean, if you want it to change, we'll change it.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what you're trying to do, I haven't seen anything like this before, that's part of the reason why I'm, I'm kind of, I, I don't know for sure whether I like it or not, I'm just trying to figure out what, what it is.
know for sure whether I like it or not, I'm just trying to figure out what, what it is.
What we'd like to do is we'd like to incorporate lots of storm, obviously being a landscape excavation contractor. I don't know if you guys are familiar with my own home, Jerry, the building inspector, knows very much about it, and he's been in all favor of this project because he'd love to see that kinda lousy property get a big beautiful building on it. So I have all intent of making this one of the nicest buildings of all of North Andover. When you come up Route 114, you see the welcome to North Andover sign, and right now it's just complete garbage property, represents the town horrendously right now. So the first thing you kinda come up and see the beautiful welcome to North Andover sign, and we even mentioned in our TSC meeting the other day, if the town for some reason wants to change or enhance that sign, we would, we would be willing to take that on, on our expense.
Sure.
And we'd like to landscape that property, so the bottom line is people come up 114 and they are just wowed by the building and just wanna pull in and say, what is going on here? And then at that point, we'll, they'll be able to see all the services we offer.
If you're not gonna be using the underneath for storage, why is everything shown with big doors that you could put a box truck in? I mean, it looks like it's a parking lot, or...
They are going to be used as storage.
It is gonna be used for storage.
Yeah, we don't deny that. It's going, it's going to be used, let's assume it's gonna be used as storage, because we don't wanna get it permitted for something and then have to come back and seek relief, because it is going to be storage. So if it's gonna be storage, it's gonna be indoor parking, but it is accessory to the business. There is absolutely no ability to come in and bring your stuff to store it, you cannot do that. It is not a rentable storage area, absolutely 100% not. It is not a place where they're gonna wholesale, it is not. It is not a nursery where you can go in and buy mulch and have it done. If Dan goes to your property and he needs to get something, he wants to be able to have materials there to be able to use, that's accessory. It is not the principal business by any stretch of the imagination, it is not.
What it sounds like.
Yeah.
This has now become, what, 70-some thousand square feet?
Oh, no, no, total, the back building is for, about 4,500, 4,400 square feet is the back building.
Now, we're talking about the bottom part.
Yeah, the, the total square footage in that entire building, top floor, bottom floor, all floors, is, as I said, it's like, what, I just quoted it, 20, total of maybe under 30,000 square feet, the whole building, all, all floors.
So the bottom is 15,000 square feet?
The first floor.
And the two wings?
It's a footprint of above 15,000.
Okay, and, I mean, I just don't see...
The reason, the reason this building is actually as big as it is, what we're proposing to do, is because what happens is this property, Kevin Murphy, I'm sure you guys know in town, is the owner of the property, and at one point this was zoned residential. Kevin went through for marketing purposes and got this rezoned to the B2. Obviously, unlike Tyler Monroe and the gentleman that was just here up on 125, they have big stockpiled materials and, you know, it's, it's not the cleanest facilities, a lot, you know, trucks everywhere and everything. The reason we did this building so big was because under the B2, it doesn't fall as any outdoor storage. So the purpose is, you're not gonna come in there and see, you know, a, look like a used truck lot, or junk cars everywhere, or, so the purpose of it is to, to, to put everything in containment, so it's not seen, it's clean, everything, the whole, the whole purpose of this property is we want this to be immaculate. You could, you could just, you could eat off the parking lot when it's all said and done, we, we really want it crystal, crystal clean.
In your current business, how many trucks, cars do you own?
I own five, five trucks myself.
Okay.
So I, I'm not, I'm not a big company by any means, I do have heavy equipment, the heavy equipment stays out on job sites, it does not return back to this facility.
I mean, if you don't need to have those types of doors, why don't you just make those things individual?
It doesn't change the use statement, though.
No, individual retail.
That's not what they're doing, that's not what they wanted to.
Well, it isn't what they wanted to.
If they did that, we would never have a problem.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Well, if you had individual retail, you'd have more traffic issues, for sure, if you think about it, if you were, but, I mean, it would be a...
It's not about the traffic, it's about our bylaws.
Okay, no, I understand, no, I can, no, I'm, I'm a good listener.
I'm actually very impressed by your passion and zeal for this, I mean, I wish we had more people in town building stuff that had as much energy.
Thank you so much, thank you for saying that.
So that's, that's a wonderful thing.
Thank you for saying that.
The problem we got, you weren't here earlier, but we were, we were on somebody earlier tonight because they were, they dipped a deck right into the watershed district, and we were empathetic to the problem, but we have a body of law, and the reason, we're, we're still trying to get through the knothole of, sorry, I just, I don't buy that the primary use in terms of square footage is, is an accessory use. That's the problem, as Dave said, if you put all retail stuff there, we wouldn't care.
First, again, if I have, I'm gonna give you an example, if I have a Walmart, my storage room for my Walmart outweighs my store by about twice. Are you gonna tell me that's not accessory to the store, to the Walmart? It is. It, it isn't, it isn't...
Walmart stores its stuff on shelves.
But my, but, but you can't, maybe Walmart isn't a good example, but there are other retail, there are other retails, well, and my point is, is you can't, you have to look at the use, what is that use being? Is there, is there a rental for the store?
I don't see where you need...
But I'm at, but again, with, with regard to whether or not he needs, that is the project that's being proposed, with all due respect, and, and if we go back and they decide to minimize the scope, I suppose they can, but what is before the board is a retail use with offices with accessory storage, and I, I really, I don't, you need to better provide us with what you really think accessory is, and are you telling me that you think that even if the accessory use is attendant to the retail, and, and that's all it is, is attendant to the retail and attendant to the, to the...
No, it's not, because other people could...
No, no, you can't, we've already told you, you can't have a separate storage.
Yeah, I think, let's, we gotta move on.
Otherwise, could you tell us on the building, let's get back to the building again, it looks like, where was the other shot of the building? This one, it looks almost like the structure sort of stands out separate from, you know, if you look at, I thought the, the design of this thing was, it was gonna be an L-shaped building, that doesn't look L-shaped.
It is.
It is.
It is?
Yeah, you can see the, the turns on that.
The problem is you only have one story above grade up front, two, one and a half above grade, a little bit too short.
Yeah, you're right.
Grading interrupts left and right and down.
So, yeah, but maybe it's what I'm doing is, it's the roof lines look, but it, I guess, maybe you can show me the, back to the original thing?
114, you have that, shall we?
Do you know what I have?
And this is all the accessory, whatever. Now, this, see, this is the shop whose pawned it.
But it looks like the, this thing sticks out, it doesn't look like it's flush. This looks like it sticks way out.
It does, from the, from the, from this building, yeah, it does, it, you know.
A transition?
It does stick out.
Why are you building something that you don't have any use for?
We have a lot of use for it.
Well, you haven't described it.
Well, hey, my, my son, I just sold a 150 flagship to Baker Joy, I'm sure he must have been in front of you people to renovate my building or not.
No, he's not, he's not.
Anyways, and, and my son was, was a participant in my building using space that, from me.
So it shuts off just a little bit, yeah.
And, so, we decided, you know, I said, you know, I said, he goes, where am I gonna go, Dad? I said, well, let's do something, and we found this property, and we decided to do, you know, he needs a place to put his business, because he's actually doing extremely well, his business is growing, and so he needs a place to put his stuff and put his, you know, whatever. A lot of the storage that you're talking about will not be somebody else's renting, but it'll be used by him, and we don't know how much yet, but a lot of it. And then, as I said, I, I'm kinda retired now, and I've been in the furniture business for, you know, 30-something years, and I, I decided to try and come up with this idea of doing a service business, which will be a very big part of this process will be, I'm gonna have a big showroom in that main building to, to try and broker services for the town of North Andover and, and whatever. And I get my family members involved, and, you know, it's, it's, this is a family project. I mean, I'm going out on a limb, I, I don't have to do this because, you know, I'm, I'm going on the downslope, and, you know, I'm divorced, and I'm, I'm divorced, and I, and I'm, I'm single, and I wanna, I wanna travel the world with, you know, some sexy women, but, yeah, but I'm, I'm...
Of course, I have great hair too, so no, no doubt, slow stuff, I hear.
So, but, but that being, that being said, that being said, no, I, I, I thought this would be, you know, my son needs a place to go, and, actually, to tell you the truth, we're going over the top, or I think we're going over the top. Instead of just having a place for him to put his equipment and start his business, I wanted to do something kinda cool, and this is, I, I don't have to do this, I don't know why I'm doing this, but I, I'm really excited about it, because I think it's pretty, it's pretty cool, and...
I don't think we're saying it's a bad idea.
No, no, I understand.
I'm talking about the scale.
I understand, I understand.
I'm saying it's a bad idea.
It's a scale question.
To know exactly what you're gonna need to put the money into doing it.
Yeah, but see, I don't, I'm not worried about money, that's one thing about me.
That's it.
But your son should, should be.
We're not, we're not here to address people's business.
No, that's it, this is not a business meeting, so, you know, I, I'm all set, I'll be all set for a long time, so, trust me.
Gene, how far along in terms of like reviews and stuff, have we started anything?
Yeah, so Lisa has submitted her first review letter, it was fairly extensive in terms of quantity of responses, but I think they'll be, you'll be able to work through them.
Frankly, in this case, before we do a lot of engineering work, I, we really do have to revisit the zoning issue. I, I, I'm, despite, I'm, I'm sorry, but despite what you say, I, I don't agree at all with that approach, and I think we, I think we're gonna need to talk to town council on this. I just, you know, so, I, I wouldn't wanna go way down the path and then find out that it's pretty much of a slim dunk that our approach is, is right, and spend a lot of money on engineering if, if, if it's gonna end up getting redesigned. I mean, I, I, as I said, I like the passion, I like the energy, I like the idea, I just want it to fit our zoning.
As far as the review, Lisa's, Lisa's been worked through, but DPW has provided comments, they're filed with conservation already, the health department's filed comments in regards to abandoning the subject system and tying in.
Yeah, okay.
But I, we certainly can talk to town council and Jerry Brown again.
So, well, let's, let's do that, yeah, let's do that. So, okay.
Okay.
So I'd just like to echo John's appreciation for the zeal, and, you know, what you said you're interested in doing for the town, I, I share the view that we admire that, but I think we have some questions about how it fits into the bylaw.
Yeah, we have no problem, we'll, we'll meet with town council and they'll do a decision and discuss it with them and submit a memorandum for them, no issue.
Whatever you guys want.
Take care, we'll do.
Bottom line, like we've been saying, from, from the get-go, we wanna do everything by the book, everything you guys want us to do, we don't wanna try to do anything under the radar, we want this 100% legit, and again...
We appreciate that, and I'm glad to hear your business is doing well too, so, beautiful thing.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your, your time this evening.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
How long, what actually is scheduled?
I don't think we have an accessory date.
Next meeting, yeah.
Is, we can get all, you know, the town council to go through that?
Yeah.
At Christmas time?
Oh, it's a pretty simple issue.
What's our next meeting?
I forget.
January.
We won't be here, right?
Oh, we're, this is gonna be, construction's gonna start for the renovation of the fire station, so...
So it's gonna be, it's not gonna be at Osgood Street, it's gonna be at the, the high school?
The school administration building, which is 566 Main Street, I will give you all that information.
All right, okay, so they're gonna continue it now to...
Yep, so we'll continue to the next hearing, we'll, we'll revisit it with Jerry and town council. You can progress with Lisa at your own determination.
We'll, we'll talk to town council afterwards, okay. Perfect, thank you very much, appreciate your time, have a good holiday.
Thank you, thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Yes, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Minutes, seconds?
Minutes, yeah. On the Verizon, it basically said that we were deferring, but I...
Just, just note your name?
No.
Okay.
On the Verizon, on the minutes, I think you have to read that, because it said, we did suggest the board, they look at the board of selectmen, but we didn't, they were also supposed to bring us back items, pictures, Amesbury locations, dimensions, and everything like that, so, we weren't just, we weren't just deferring to the board of selectmen on the prands, I think...
They were gonna get a seat.
Locations, yeah, how much the coverage went, there was a, there was a whole list of items, so...
On that point, I really think we, they should be able to answer, what's the circumference or the radius of how far this reaches? So let's say no one in my house is on the one that's in front of my house, but can my next door neighbor still get it, or does it not reach that far?
Yeah.
Like, how far does it reach? They should be able to answer that, and like, I could not say the answer.
Because I've seen a bunch of these boxes now, or in different areas, and I don't, I don't believe the telephone pole should necessarily be, now become other equipment, that you finally have a four-foot wide telephone pole, because that's what they're showing, it's three feet wide on top of the pole.
Especially, in my neighborhood, I do not want it to...
So they're bigger than a regular telephone pole?
Oh, they're three feet, yeah, so...
The diode or...
Yeah.
Diode?
No, not three feet.
I saw one that was labeled, no, no, the block, the tran, the tran, not the thing on the top, the boxes, the connection boxes.
Three feet high.
Three feet wide.
No.
Well, that's what I saw of one tagged Verizon.
Yeah, but one it was carrying out, it wasn't down.
No, no, that was the thing on the top.
The transmitter that comes down, 10 feet off the ground.
The square boxes, they come down lower.
So please, send it to initial information, I'll get it all to you. The, the information you requested is just, I didn't send it to you because I figured they'll be coming back again, I've sent it to the town manager, he's thinking about it, I don't think it's gone to the board of selectmen yet, but they've sent the locations, they've sent the distances, they've sent the picture that they showed tonight, they've sent the Amesbury locations, I can get it all to you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that they're going back to us, because that's not, the minutes sort of said.
Well, at this point, I've forwarded to the town manager, like we discussed, and I'm waiting to hear back from him.
No.
Okay.
If we could get those addresses, because it should be in...
Yeah, that's, I have them, I'll, I'll get them to you.
Okay, so...
Okay, so the minutes has amended, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Make motion to approve this number, first meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
All favor. Anything else before we go?
Yes.
Yes?
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
No questions.
Just the answers.
A while back, oh, okay, a while back, we had 1046, 1048, Great Pond Road, pick up a house, move the house, do you remember that?
Yeah.
So, those, that's for sale, and has that been done? Has the house been moved? They're selling it.